If they don't have like.
Yes.
All my caregivers.
Did I give you everything they needed tomorrow for that grant?
No. Mostly men.
I think so.
plumbers, mechanics, uh pilots. Um my sister.
Uh um he did included in that report. Yeah, he brought that to work.
I'll have him answer most of the application.
Okay. So I didn't know. Oh, well, I could I could give a few seconds.
Just a pass.
Yes.
Give it a thirty seconds.
I'm giving you thirty seconds.
Oh, wonderful.
That's a hero's story. That full that went full circle.
Yeah. Is this gonna be inspired by my daughter while she keeps getting work and uh. He'll be patient. Well, why is there?
Yeah.
Not near that bright right now.
Uh huh. No comments?
I need that picture to show.
In hand, you got the calluses.
Oh, yeah, I got the calluses. Also, I got them.
Exactly. The hands, so people like to see my, but like he doesn't like that.
I do like.
Right down there.
Okay, we're here. We're doing it.
Yeah, we have a quorum, um the um Duncanville Arts Commission called a meeting to order at six thirty P M. Okay, we have no public comments, so we'll go on to commissioners' reports and um each commissioner, unless you need a little bit of more time, about two minutes or to to whatever you'd like to share with us. And I'll start on this end so that we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay, um I will start with Vis- Vicente Vicente Delgado Junior. We visited him last week at his his place, the Hispanic Coalition of North Texas. Absolutely amazing services, so excited to be working with them. One of the things that I would like to uh rethink is a uh a podcast for Duncanville. They've got everything that would be needed, they would be helpful. Uh and it's also they'll and if you may want to talk about the art side more, you could do that, that'd be great. So I'm I'm very interested in doing that with them. Uh my kindness festival was incredible. I had help from from Amy getting people. The southern sector was well represented. I was pleased with that. Duncanville had a had a choir, DeSoto, Oak Cliff, Grand Prairie, so we were we were good, you know. Um and I'll just say, I can't really take much credit for it. It was really well well, here we go, was there. He um I didn't see his performance because I couldn't be two places one time. I was thankful for that. Um it just was not something I could have done by myself, and it wasn't just a team, it was just not my skill set. And sometimes there's just divine help, and I will just leave it there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Me, we go this way, okay, I couldn't tell. Um I don't have a lot to say other than, um as you know, I run Duncanville Community Theater, and we opened Harvey last weekend, a good classic from the forties. Um you know, you never know how forty's classic is gonna be received, but it was actually requested a lot by the younger crowd, the twenties and thirty year olds. And um it's well attended, Saturday night's audience was a little small. Yesterday afternoon, we were standing, I mean, like, they're like two walls to the wall. Mac was there yesterday afternoon, I think Angela's coming this week. But um it does run this Thursday, Friday and Saturday at clock. And um great quality theater on Main Street, celebrating the artists of the great southwest area of Dun- of Dallas County. So come see the show if you'd like to, and that's that.
I did forget one thing. Thanksgiving skirt does have an annual Thanksgiving service and it's non uh it's interfaith. This year is at it's at Cathedral of Hope. And um they are singing a choir for which a choir. They are singing a song for which I wrote the the text and a friend composed it. She's a she's a composer. It's at seven on Thursday. Everybody's welcome. It's interesting talks and other music than mine. That's all, thank you.
Well.
If you wanna know, I'll give you details.
I I'm I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with this process, so I didn't realize that I was supposed to be giving some kind of report.
Oh, no, you're not obligated to. What we do is um a lot of times between the times that we have had a last meeting, sometimes you might go out and see artists or come across something or do something or share something that that's happened, you just wanna share it with the folks, but that's up to you. It's not required.
Okay, my emphasis since the last meeting has been a humble meeting. We have set an issue of food and lack of food. I uh I do a lot of volunteer work across roads and also at my church. And I've adopted a a little book barn that's right across the street over here in the walk area. And I go over there and I stock food there. Matter of fact, I've been in there tonight stuff stocking food. And it always surprises me how quickly that food disappears, which indicates that there is a need in Duncanville. We have some people who are food deprived. And so that that is really my emphasis right now and as I prepare to get out.
Ms Coleman?
Yes, uh good evening, everyone. Uh to uh first of all, we're working on uh we've got sponsors to uh feed four families for Thanksgiving.
Very good.
And um I'm not talking about just canned goods. We're talking about ham, turkeys, uh fresh produce, uh vegetables, um breads, uh homemade breads. So we're gonna be taking that probably uh it's ready and I'm thinking maybe Wednesday or Thursday. I'll have that um taken care of through. I've got a ministry called Girlfriend's Ministry, so you'll hear me say a lot about girlfriends. It's a a ministry. And so uh we were able to get four families, uh very needy families. Um and then my second one is Girlfriend's Ministries have uh our annual luncheon, which will be December sixth. It would be it's going to be at O M C, which is uh orchestrated memories something, O M C. Uh it's located in DeSoto and tickets are one hundred dollars for individuals. Uh but if you all would like to attend, you will not have to pay, I will have a seat for you. It is something um it's a memory that you won't ever forget. Uh I'm an artsy person, so we will have lots of artsy uh things going on. We'll have a great lunch, uh we'll have raffle items and we will have um awards. But it's just a fun afternoon, even though it's called Girlfriend's, it's male and female. Uh and so if you'd like to come, uh there's no charge for this group. Uh and I would encourage you all to come and really see what true sisterhood is all about. December sixth, eleven thirty until two, we'll have great great if you're a music person, great music. Um we've got a great band, we'll have a great great singers. So just come, I only ask one thing, bring your best dudes. Which means come looking your best, that's all.
Okay.
December sixth.
December sixth, where is it?
It's at O M C, it's in DeSoto, it's on uh Beltline. Uh I don't have the, I've got the address in my phone, but um it's on Beltline. If you know where DeSoto World uh Market Place is on Beltline, it's at the very end, it's an event center at the very end.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you come, just bring it, just whatever your best do is, just bring it. We're gonna love on you, you'll have a great time.
Thank you. Mr. Villa?
So, are we related to something? Um I performed at Vicky's uh festival.
Awesome.
Very cool, um I don't know if you guys know comedy comedian, I think I mentioned it last time. And um by coincidence on our first um meeting, you know, she suggested she was looking for it. Serendipity. And uh took some of my friends um that uh I work with around town. Uh one actually being a local black and black comedian. Um and by the way, I own a comedy club as well. Um like the only comedy club in Grand Prairie. It's above my seafood restaurant. Um and we have shows there every weekend, which by the way, you guys are welcome to have. You know, um free seating too this uh Saturday. Um it's my eighty year old uh Caucasian white comedian, he's very old. No one wants to go see him because they're like, I can't relate to this guy. Yet he's the only, he's one of the five comedians in Dallas who actually tour around the United States, like every week. So he's really funny. Yeah, but everyone else like looks, you know, judging a book by its covers like, oh, I don't want to watch this old guy do comedy. Um but yeah, we're filling it up. I I uh last week, we donated food to uh my restaurant donated food to the uh Grand Prairie Art Commission. Um they were, which I we donated food because I thought it was gonna be like a little bit similar to the Duncanville Art Commission. And since I just really recently got interested in this, I was like, well, let me explore and see what how they go about doing stuff. Uh but their commission is more based around uh they've been doing um art projects for the city of like of Grand Prairie for the past like thirty-five years. And their emphasis is on bringing about plays um and centered around uh the Uptown Theater, which is where they had this event. And uh the event was basically to promote like uh upcoming twenty twenty-six um shows, which was pretty cool. It wasn't really um like similar to what we're doing here, but it gave me a lot of ideas as to how a a a small group organizes big festivals for the town. And and it was uh it was kind of packed, there were like three hundred people. Um in the small theater um and and I was just very interested in in that. I've also been talking to a few people um just to organize like some random projects here in town. Um just to see how it would work out on paper. Um I was thinking about like a project called Duncanville Fit. Um Duncanville Fit, basically providing like a free fitness class one day out of the week. Um to promote like a fit lifestyle in Duncanville, um which would involve a person dedicate a a fitness trainer providing like one hour of a week train uh for every for everyone who wants to do it for free, basically. Uh centered around Armstrong Park, along with like a D J to provide some kind of, you know, entertainment while that's going on. And also, one of the things I've been looking for is like food trucks. Um who would possibly volunteer for an event like that? Um so I'm just working it out on paper just to see how it would work out and see if anyone would be interested in lending their time for such festivals.
Did you see our Tai Chi classes? Were you there for that? I had somebody from, I think she's in Waxatch, but she came up and did two Tai Chi classes.
Oh, and I did.
Tai Chi is great for older people.
I love Tai Chi, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So I can be, I don't know, she can, I don't know if she charges, we of course she didn't charge for us, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, uh my idea was to find volunteers because ultimately if we're providing like a free entertainment for the whole city, um they obviously have a space to advertise their classes. Um and if people like their vibe and whatever they're putting out, like Tai Chi um stuff teaching, they might check out their full-time classes. So that that's what I'm not looking to spend any money, I'm trying to see how we can do it on a zero dollar budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nice chair.
Um well, I did go to Harvey on Sunday at matinee, my wife and my brother-in-law enjoyed it, I not enjoyed it, so that was good. Um we have a new commission, so I don't know if people still wanna hear poems, but.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, this one's called Blues Gone By. Blues swirl about echoing hues before, some midnight dark and best kept apart, while others daylight spun with melancholy, shared quietly together. Boldest teal shades shout telling tales, indignant tirades struggling to hold on to cooler tones. Polar ice seeps in on clear cl- clear tracks, more acceptable and politely blue. Altogether hues transforming, shifting sorely as unto morning, then sweetly tinged with shared afternoon tea. Af- uh forgive the silent slips into the navy night with shared dreams echoing hues before and blues gone by.
That's very different.
Yeah, that was, it was good.
Not, I mean, it was different and good, it was just. So did you submit to the virtues project? Have we talked about that? You get up there.
Um before I do my uh couple of minutes, I just want to see if our um council liaison wanted to share anything with the group.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um only thing I would like to share is tomorrow, the council um agenda is uh we have, what was the thing that we have on there for the briefing? Uh Cultural District.
Cultural District.
Yes, is on the briefing. So briefing starts at six and we are up to be briefed about how we move it forward with the steering committee and picking a steering chair, having that discussion and action to be taken on it, most likely the next council meeting. And also during the council meeting, the applicants who applied for funding will uh will be discussing that publicly as well. So if you're around, please come out because you are woven throughout our agenda.
And when is this again, I'm sorry?
Tomorrow night.
At what time?
Six is the briefing and seven or immediately after briefing is the meeting.
So what is starting at five o'clock?
Five o'clock, five o'clock, we have an early start, thank you. We have an early start tomorrow at five. So if you can make it out at five, come on, but the the way the agenda is set, the cultural district will be a couple items in two. So if you're not able to make it until six, we talk a lot, so we will probably still be talking about items one and two.
Uh huh.
So you'll probably still make it in time to hear us discuss the cultural district.
Except for this building, I'm kind of learning.
This room right here, this is the council conference room.
Okay.
And then that's the council chamber.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um I'm just gonna back up a couple of things, so um just giving you an idea, oh, I'm sorry. Um miss, I just, well, let me tell what we're doing first. Um we're just on commissioners' report, limit two minutes and um and then if you've done anything or art-related or anything that you'd like to share with the group, you're more than welcome to share it with us, you know, since the last meeting to now or in between or before, it's up to you. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I don't have anything like arts-related at the moment, but I mean, I just started my night shift clinical, so that's what kinda catching up to me right now.
There's still not a problem.
Yes, well.
So you got a lot on your plate. So um I just wanted to bring up about it on a couple of things and then we'll talk a little bit about it on the Q and A session. Um things that have been happening between the transition of the um former Arts Board and to now. Um we did, I did participate in National Night Out, um that was um very nice. Um there was a Duncanville Board appreciation that a lot of us attended. Um Parks and Rec had the Memphis Soul Concert. We had uh attended the Theater of Demons of Fleet Street, which was great. Um the Arts Commission participated in the Boo Bash, which we gave out candy at the Boo Bash, and that was at the Field House, and that was wonderful. Um I attended the joint meeting with the Arts Foundation and the Hilton and the city um earlier and we'll discuss that sometime later um as to some of the stuff going on there. Uh but they wanted to get more involved with the arts and very excited about it. Um I did it with uh Duncanville I S D, the Fall Family Liter- Literary Night at Alexander Elementary. Alex sent out a couple of requests, where they had one last week and I think they have one for this week. I had prior commitments and I'll talk about that in the next um session, give you a little bit more, but we tried to do uh capitalization, you know, keep keep those um communication open because the arts group is fairly new and we've been out there trying to promote ourselves to let them know that we are here. Um recently, um we did a um tour with the Old and Year Museum, which I'll address that when we get down to that portion of it. And like Mary Ann was saying, we uh met with the National Hispanic uh Coalition Group and uh one of the churches that has um a lot of things that we could probably capitalize on. And so we can factor that into some of the things that that we're doing. Also attended the last city council meeting because we were on the agenda, well, not us per se, but um the applicants who had uh put in for an arts grant were given their presentation. So in the future, when it's it's really good and and I asked Alex to um make a copy of this for you, but this is one of our um grant recipients is getting ready to have their program. And um I think that as an arts commission, that when we approve a grant and uh the individual is doing their program and so forth, if you can, we need to be represented since we're the ones that are giving them the money, seeing how it's going, seeing how everything turned out, things like that. Um for your, so that's pretty much it. For your perusal while we're talking about the next things, um um this is something I put together for um the Arts Commission table when we're at some of these events, because people are always asking us, what is the Duncanville Arts Group and what do they do? And uh I know, and um so sometimes I think if they have something to see, something visualized, it's helpful. And I really want and and these were, I want them to have like two hundred and fifty pictures of us, but but I only could do twenty for this particular um um book thing that I did for us. But one of the things that um I would like uh to see us have, and I think I've asked for it once or twice, perhaps Alex, um if we could have a um some type of little business card or something that has the just your part of it down here, the communication and the Q R codes or something, so that we can have it on the table and give it and give it to them. So the first part of the the book is more like uh programs that we have and then the last part were some of the grant recipients. So uh that's something I've been showing the people when we're at um events. So that's my two-minute report, a little bit longer than that. Here and then, we're gonna move on to commissioners' questions and answers session. And this is where I wanted to sort of address you all, or give you all an opportunity to ask questions because you're new. Just like Linda said earlier, um about about the two two-minute uh presentation. But having read the minutes and gone over anything and you're new to the board and we're doing some things, give you an opportunity to ask us some of the questions that you may have about what we're doing or where we're at.
I guess my question would be, because I'm I'm kind of lost here. There's a lot of, I've missed a lot of activities, so how do, how are you disseminating the information for us to know exactly what's going on? Because I've missed some things since our last meeting.
Since our last meeting? Um a lot of it, some of it, some of these meetings, we get invites from other folks. Like the former chair invited uh myself and Councilwoman Gooden to do the tour of this museum or um we were asked to, if we wanted to go attend this meeting with the National Hispanic. So a lot of times it it comes through the chair. Um and then Alex can disseminate it out if we need, somebody else or others, you know, see if anybody else is available. Some of it comes through things that we've heard or we volunteer. Um for instance, um the Park and Recs or the Library or the Field House or different places are doing a program. They'll either contact Alex or they'll contact the chair or something and ask if we would participate. And we do have something coming up on at Christmas, because we've done it last couple of years, where um we helped uh the city by hosting, um by manning the table for Santa letters. Yes, Santa letters, that was it. Um and then sometimes then they have other things going on. We have a tablecloth, we have um a backdrop, step or repeat. Um we've tried to, um we have some some ideas, like when they have um when they ask us to sometimes participate in things, they'll want us to maybe do an art project and we come up with some ideas. And we do have some supplies, plenty of supplies, um for different little art projects. We've done painting, we did painting with the library, we did painting out in the park, we did what are those pipe things?
Pipe cleaner ornaments.
Pipe cleaner ornaments, we did some at uh Halloween uh Fall Festival last year. We did some at Christmas time, showing kids how to do that, I was good with that. Uh the kids gravitate, we uh did we did painting rocks when uh Parks and Rec had a movie night. With the movie, I can't, A Million Miles Away, which was the first Hispanic to um go into space and um and so forth. We participated in that and we had them painting, designing their own little moon rock. And then we gave out moon pies, they just love that stuff. And so so but it's our way of, um you know, we don't all come out there, but we just volunteer and we do some of these activities because that's the only way they're gonna know that the the commission is here. And then we do a lot of other stuff, which you'll see in.
We do have a Facebook page, have you gotten on our Facebook page?
And we have Instagram, right?
Yes, but not nearly as active as the.
Facebook.
It's a Facebook.
Yeah.
Than not as active as it needs to be Facebook.
Okay, okay.
Because I was really disappointed, whatever you had, I knew nothing of it, I would have probably participated.
Well, that, yeah, but that was part of.
That was her thing.
That was her thing, it wasn't part of the arts commission.
I probably did mention it last time.
Yeah.
But um maybe without context, yeah.
Okay.
It was Dallas Kindness Week and that's that's what I told you about last time.
And so a lot of times when when members talk about different programs and stuff like, you know, like when you did your rhythm um thing with Pink Diamonds, I I mentioned that in the meetings and so forth, so.
Well, another little art tour that we did, it was so wonderful.
Yes, and I forgot about that, we did the art tour.
Yeah.
That um. Yeah, that was wonderful.
It seems like I'm missing things, so.
Well, but you're not. The thing that we did with the Hispanic um center was not, that was the the foundation, not the commission. So I was invited because of the podcast.
Right.
But that was really the commission, then you got invited.
Right.
It was kind of a last minute thing.
And then the museum one was.
And it was not a commission thing, so you didn't miss out.
And the museum one was more of, it was the foundation with a gentleman named Monte. It's last name Anderson?
Anderson.
Okay, Monte Anderson. And that was.
Yeah, I know that's my.
Oh, okay. Okay, and so that was an invite from.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, things, you know, the rules about quorums apply too, so that's why we aren't doing handy-dandy messages like we used to. But you would get a a B C C email, you know.
Yeah.
Alex is very good about sending emails.
Uh telling us, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when when we need somebody, like when I I was not able to do the Duncanville I S D, those two events, Alex did send forwarded out to you all, asking was anybody available? And if you were, then I would have gotten stuff two nights ago.
Can we get those any, I mean, it seems like it was like three days before they actually met, so.
She only sent it a week before.
That, so the person, whoever was requesting it was very, okay, I just wondered because I would really.
A lot of the things we we get are our last minute, they're like, oh, wait, let's email the art, let's see if the Arts Commission wants to have a boom. You know, and having been on the planning end of some of those events, sometimes you're like, oh, no, we need another table here, let's see, what can we do? You know, and then they reach out to Alex and Alex sends it to us. It's not like it's a year in advance or months in advance or anything.
Okay. It's less than a day.
Yeah, yeah.
And now as we move forward and something that um as we move forward it is, if there are some programs that we wanna do, things that we're interested in, during the grant process is the time that we need to put in our request for the programs that we want to have.
And when do we do that?
When the grant process opens and then we put it on the agenda for us to discuss and then to put the grant program. Again, because those are things are changing, evolving. And things like that, so that's how we get the funding for some of this. So just F Y I.
When's the next cycle that you?
The next cycle. Next cycle stops, starts um.
December second.
December second, and we do need to schedule a. We need to schedule an info session because that's something that was required in policy. Maybe like a week or so before that, which is really Thanksgiving or right after Thanksgiving.
What can I say?
Yeah. But we need to, we need to, we already have really the information, we just need the location and to do an info session and get something out there. Ron did the last one, former chair did the last one. I can do this one or anybody else, all of us are capable of doing.
How many people attended the last one, do we know?
The last one was four or five, I think.
Yeah.
About four or five.
Is it possible to move that to a YouTube thing at some point?
We do have the recording out there of the previous.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm almost wondering if that would be.
Much more feasible?
Yeah, more feasible and a better use of everybody's time, you know.
And everybody doesn't have to be at the info session, it'll only one of us.
If I were applying, I would be able to go back and watch, okay, wait a minute, slow down, let me see what I need. I know it's part of our policy, maybe we need to amend that.
That maybe we need to.
I'm just throwing that out there that that seems like it might be a better thing.
So I did embed that video into the application page, so that it's sitting at the top. And I even got an email today, hey, can you send me the application? Said the application will open on the second, here's the address, you can watch the current info session that's posted there, so that's up there.
So would that suffice?
Will that suffice? Do we have to have it in person? I mean, tell me what we need to do.
I would say maybe we talk about that during the policy discussion and maybe that's one of the things you wanna cover. Maybe you wanna re-watch that video and see if you feel like it encapsulates it and if another video needs to be made and switch it however you guys wanna do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So do you all have any other questions?
No, I think the info session was.
I had one, one that um, I wanted to do a little bit of research about like all the events that are happening around sound. Which was interesting about hearing the first question, because um, I couldn't find a, like a good. Like database where a lot of these events were going on and immediately I was like, oh well, there's a problem. And yeah, solution could be found in the future.
Well, I forgot to mention, I did go to the last, uh, meeting last week with community engagement. Where our liaison is also the liaison for that one, they have a new chair. They are excited about some of the things that they are planning on doing and that's something that they are focusing on too. And you're welcome to go to any groups.
And it is a perennial problem now in the world to get that across.
To get the information out there.
Isn't there a calendar though that everybody can go to?
We do have an event calendar, events.duncanvilltx.gov and it is, the public is able to submit to it. There are like, as you're going through, you'll see that there's like certain things that qualify and don't qualify, things to be open to the public, needs to be such. But and we do have people from the public who actually do contribute to that calendar. Uh, events.duncanvilltx.gov and you could also find it just by going to. And you'll see events right on the front page and you just can click more events.
Yeah, I love using Instagram and that's like a really good way to um, share all the real time information. Yeah, a- and I did realize that that was like a good opportunity because you could do reels, you can do videos, photos. Especially like ahead of time.
Yes.
And I mean. Some of the events could be, could bring in much more people if there was more stuff like that. So I'd be like, oh, by the way, is there any way that we could get like a digital copy of this?
I emailed it to you.
Oh, perfect. Do you organize all this?
Um, the rest of the pages I did not, we're, we're not in the digital version that I sent you, the agenda is. But there is a digital version of the policy that I can get all of that to you, yes.
Well, I just wanna say, I like cluttered little stuff and I know it takes a lot of time to do these things, so I appreciate the hard work.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, yeah, anyway, so the Instagram thing, uh, like can anyone just jump into that? Because I mean, if there's not, like Alex was saying, there, there is like, is an official Instagram page or something?
I mean, the city's got a very active Instagram, um, it's getting stuff onto the Arts Commission's Instagram that's a little.
That's what I'm saying, I didn't see anything regarding the arts.
Yeah, and they do have a Facebook page, but that, um, that wound up a process where information was given to me to put on to it. And that's sort of fell to the wayside as everybody got really busy.
Yeah.
But I mean, yeah, I mean, all I need is the content or ideas for content or things that you wanna put out. I know I've got some content from you that I need to get out there, but then I can, we would have to post that for you, but we could do that.
Okay.
And then a lot of times when Alex posts something on Duncanville Arts Commission, at least I know I'm on website, on Facebook, I forward it on. And I know Councilwoman Gooden does, I mean, I just try to.
We should have a grant posted something.
Yes, and I've, I've been sending that out too.
And share again, we share it.
Yeah, we share.
Do we have an acronym by any chance? Are we like DACO?
No.
No? Like, sometimes people don't like to put like.
Well, we, we have to for the city.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For eighty income plans, we gotta, we gotta do that. Um, I do wanna bring up. Lights in the Park is coming up, I know Devin's gonna save you a table and I know that that's not on the agenda, but it seemed like you guys gave me a window to bring that up.
Yes, yes, and which I said, and that is on December fourth. And it's the letters to Santa thing. Actually, we need probably two tables, we need one for the arts thing. Is it December fourth, December fifth? It's the. Wherever.
Is that Thursday or is it Friday?
Fourth is a Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's the fifth. Then it must be the fifth.
And where is.
It is the fifth.
Over here at Armstrong Park.
Over here, okay. When is the parade?
Isn't it the fifth? It's the fifth, it's the same time, same, like they have the parade and then.
They have the parade and then they have all the activities.
And all the activities and we would be right there in the park. So if I can get it, maybe two or three people who are willing to volunteer, who like kids. And, and, oh, I mean, really, our table gets flooded with kids. Well, no matter what we do, we get flooded with kids and, I mean, that's good, but they like it, but um.
What time?
I, I'll have to find that out from Devin, more than likely setup will be probably around three or four. Which I can do that and then we'll probably just go until eight, cause a lot of times, once it gets really dark and it's hard for them to write. And all that stuff, then we're probably finished after that.
The parade usually starts at seven, I think, or something, so maybe even start like, stop when the parade starts or something.
Yeah, and then we just, like last year, we wore ugly sweaters or Christmasy sweaters or something like that. Which, you know, it was cute, so, but uh, once Devin sends me the info, sends Alex the information, he'll send it out. And then whoever is available to volunteer, will volunteer. Okay, so, did that answer some of you else or clarify some things? And then some of the programs that you're suggesting or would like to see happen, how we do it. If, like, the grant application pro- uh, process that happens here in December would be for the first part of the year. Because by the time it goes through its whole process, it'll, it has to go through its different segments. So you plan it for a little bit in the future, okay?
Can you make the suggestion?
See if, how the group is about it, uh, there's some things that we've done in the past that we can continue or we don't have to. That's the will of the body and then we just move forward with it. But nothing, nothing moves forward unless you put it in a motion. We can talk all day long.
Yeah.
Unless you put it in a motion, nothing happens. Okay. All right, all righty.
Can I add one more?
Yes, sir.
Here in this, so if you have agenda items that you wanna include in the agenda, you can email those to me, but please have them. The deadline's a little bit different than it used to be. You know, in a perfect world, if you can give them to me like two weeks before the meeting, that would be ideal, I can get it on there, I can get it through the process and I can make sure. But it's, but anybody can ask for an item to be on the agenda, that seems like pretty important to have out there too. So do you not feel like I'm trying not to drive this, you are driving this? If you have things that you wanna bring to the group, ideas, whatever, topics, email me, let me know, hey, add this to the agenda and I'll get that out to you.
And I understand if it's not on the agenda, cause you're supposed to do it in advance, that we can't discuss it until the next meeting. It has to be an agenda item for that, okay? Anything else for clarification? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to item five, consider the October twenty eight, twenty, twenty-five meeting minutes. Alex sent those ahead of time, hopefully everybody had a chance to review.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, it's been moved by Amy Jackson and second by Linda Lydia. To approve the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Any unreadiness? Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? As have it, motion carries. All right, next we're gonna have a presentation, Duncanville Field House mural.
Okay, so this is, we're, we're bringing this back, it's ready to come back again. A- as Craig will let you know and the, the, the photo kind of shows pretty evidently, how old is this though?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years old and as you can see, it's barely holding on. Um, Craig has budgeted to redo the mural. And the, um, he has a limited budget for this, but he does have a budget and he has a timeframe of really wanting to try to accomplish this within about six months. Have it done. The goal of bringing this to the Arts Commission is assistance with locating an artist. How to, if you wanna be involved. Being involved and finding an artist, being involved in helping to select the piece of artwork that goes up here. And possibly bring back like, create, create a contest, get samples. Bring those to city council so that they can make that final selection of, of art that you recommend to them. Art pieces that you recommend to them, that they can make the final selection. The budget is reasonably limited, but uh, there is a budget to accomplish this. And this is a great opportunity for an artist to get their name out there, to have a portfolio piece that is remarkable. And to be a part of Duncanville history.
Where is the mule going to be located?
It's right in front of the building, when you walk up, the door's right here, you see the front entrance, so it's adjacent, facing the parking lot with the front entrance right here. So you come off Main Street right here, it's right in front. And the reason we chose this picture is to show you, this blew off by the wind a year or so ago. And this picture really looks great, it don't look near this good right now, it's, it's faded and really, so. I was a little bit hesitant to use the picture, cause it looks so, but uh, uh, it is blown off. It's, it's, it's some sort of a hazard with people out in the crowd, in the streets with the wind blowing, you know, you don't even wanna think about that. But we do wanna get it fixed, we're, we're been talking about this for what, at least a year, maybe two? And it needs to be one iconic photo that captures what we're about, the city. And make it something iconic and something that people wanna take their picture with and maybe a message included. And we look to you guys to give us the, the image and create a contest. Alex used to work at the Field House, so I'm partial to Alex and want him to support the city and the Arts Commission. As well as uh, uh, the things that, that we can do to be a player in the community. And this is, this is a way that we wanna be involved, if you guys wanna be involved.
Two questions, does it have to be panels rather than painted on the surface?
If we start changing and doing, could be this, could it be electronic, could we change it once every six months? We just, we will be here a year and a half from now. The answer to that is yes, we can do anything we wanna do.
Painted on the surface, it doesn't have to be these panels, cause these are panels, it looks like.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is number six, is what we're looking at?
Yes, ma'am, what's in red describes, and that was our idea to put it back like it was, this is what they did back in the day. We could go straight on the brick, but then you gotta put something over the brick to make it a smooth surface and. And so we just took the approach was putting it back like.
I'd like to show you some murals that are on, on brick that actually does not have an issue with smoothness, that are really good. Now, the next question is, does the artist have to be a local Duncanville artist in order to compete for this?
That would be a commission.
Okay, so we would make that decision.
We would make that decision.
Okay, cause I, I.
And, and, and just for some background information, um, those of us that have been on the floor for a while. We, we have done a lot of research and stuff done and all that and looked at different artists and murals, even talked about rap.
I was gonna say, one of the things that we had talked about Craig back when Tim came in, we actually wrote an RFP that never ended up going anywhere. But um, was a rap, which does look really good on brick. Quite frankly, I went through McDonald's drive-through the other day and they had a rap on the brick and while I was waiting to, to go up, I did a lot of analyzing. And, and it does, you know, rap does look good on brick, I, I worry about painting directly on the wall because of the wear and the elements and all of that stuff. So, but I, I, I think a rap might be cool, but um, and I know the other thing is when we had looked at this before. If we have a contest or whatever, we talked about an area in the lower, maybe the center of it, that was maybe an Instagrammable. Type of photo op place where people could have their picture taken with a huge mural behind them, we're kind of keeping that in mind if, if you're looking for ideas.
The only thing is, his, his budget is like less than twenty thousand and that.
I know there's a chamber, the chamber mural, but now granted it was to paint on the building, but it was right at ten thousand. So I don't know where that comes in with the rap or anything else and, and that was a local artist who's maybe perhaps giving us a, a good deal. So she could have her name, I don't really know the answer to that, but that was around ten, so I don't know, it would be interesting to find out what that could happen for twenty, you know.
Well, twenty thousand is a great budget, I'm, I seriously.
Well, you said less than twenty thousand.
I got seventy thousand for nine signs.
Okay.
Now that could be.
Yeah, but.
One person at a time talking.
Um, my question is, would this be a good thing to apply for a grant, both in the grant cycle?
For the, um, the mural, the third, uh, the third option? Cause a part of our policy, we do have the third one. That the, that the city can apply for, for this is, is.
Wouldn't that be meaning it would be restricted to an artist, a local artist?
We're looking at.
According to the grant, not red or white.
I'm not, the city can't apply to the third.
Five years ago, I was.
Yeah. City can only do the second one.
Rest of you guys to do is to draw this and give us an image on this, we're gonna take it. And we're not adverse to raps and anything you guys wanna do, I'm just trying to get to the finish line. We've had this conversation for a year and a half.
Yes.
Been approved dollars, I've got a budget to work with, we got, like I said, nine other signs that are, needs help. This is just one of them, happens to be the biggest of the group, probably the most visible and has more interaction because of what we're trying to do with it. But we still gotta fix the mark, excuse me, the marquee out front, the big signs up top have melted vinyl and a lot of things. That have to be done as well and just, just one of them, so we're open.
Was there any special like significance about this mural?
It was one of four when we, when it was done in two thousand. There was a computer screen on one of them, there was a volleyball, um, uh, player and a basketball player and I forget what the other one. But they were all across the front, the student center had like a computer board with a wire. They were illustrating what was inside, basketball, volleyball and computers, uh, or studies, whatnot, the student center, so. The other ones were taken down through years, the, the volleyball was taken down when I got here in sixteen, this one stayed, the only one that stayed.
The reason I ask those because I'm always like, like trying to find like interesting workplace. And it's just so obvious that like the word dunk is in Duncanville, so I thought I had some elements.
We could sell a sponsorship to Duncan.
My thoughts, and this is just me, and this goes back to perhaps when I was working with Commissioner Perry, Tim Perry on this before. And he and I talked about, you know, the, the fact that we're, we are volunteers. I don't know that I would probably be in favor of the Arts Commission taking the lead on soliciting the designs. I don't know that I would probably be in favor of the Arts Commission taking the lead on soliciting the designs, I think it's cool to do that, but then perhaps being. Not unlike when Monty had at the co-op thing where they had the arts thing, we didn't take the lead on getting the art, but yet we were part of the, the art review and that kind of thing, I don't know, I think that, um, that's a lot.
The photography, you mean?
Pardon?
The photography one?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, I would love for us to be active in helping ensure that it promotes Duncanville in the way that we want it to be, but I'm not sure that we have the, um.
Cause this is, yeah, this is a professional level.
Yeah.
Thing, this is not something somebody logo can do. It's gigantic and huge and.
I would like for people to submit art pieces.
I know a bunch of, I know some local muralists who do bigger projects than this.
Really?
I do too.
They're awesome, they're in this area.
I do too, this is not a big.
Yeah, it's really not.
You guys were discussing about time periods, and you guys been discussing these things for like, two years? Is there like, we have like, time limits, or like, at least goal?
He would like six months.
At least in that sense?
Different.
Just so we can like, aim for something, instead of just like, like you said, just talk about it?
Has there ever been an RFP before?
No ma'am.
Nobody's ever done one.
Yeah, it's never gotten that far.
He would like that.
That's the first thing.
Okay.
So.
I've worked on committees where we've done this for different cities, and this uh, the hardest part is what we're doing right now. You just, you do have to do the work, because you wanna make sure, um, that it represents the city. And so, but uh, once you get it up and find out, you know, it's, uh, it's just a. The, the hardest part is uh, sitting down, figuring out what we want on there. And once we do that, it's really, you know, just put our heads together.
Yeah, I remember when we had a little committee, a subcommittee for the city where we uh, came up with a logo, the new logo for Duncanville. And I mean, we had submission various, you know, designs, and then it was just decided by the commission. Which design we thought most reflected Duncanville, and uh, dunking. Duncanville, that was an interesting take on that.
Like, I was thinking about like, a Duncanville Dunk Contest, like, in the future.
I'm not serious.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I have a question, so in, in that uh, sense, um, like, I remember I was working for um, the seven eleven headquarters. And my manager was really, really smart, and he created like, a, a word map. Um, that basically illustrated all the issues that we're having, that we were having in our department, i- in like, singular words. And it was just like, a interesting map, uh, I think, uh, it would be kinda cool if we did that for Duncanville. A word map regarding like, the identity of what Duncanville is, so, so we could like, better choose like, these things. Cause you're saying like, an identity for Duncanville, but um, I mean, I'm not too sure of what identity Duncanville has, so that would be kind of interesting.
I don't know, what do you think about the logo?
Mr. Logo.
The logo's uh.
I thought it was good.
I'd like to contribute real quick, because going along the same lines as just this image right here, we also have like, one of the top women's basketball teams for Duncanville High School, right? So, if we can just, because like, we have like, a powerhouse high school, right? I'm just thinking, yes, alongside for at least the image, we do something that helps represent, literally something that can bring in as much economic revenue as, at school, so. I'm just saying for that, like, temporary image, image.
And my thought is, ju- just having a, well, we put together like, a, a contest or, um, a call for artists, and let the artists do their rendering. You tell them what you're looking for, and let the artists decide what they wanna do, and then we look through there and, and maybe select from there.
Absolutely.
But let the artists, let the artists.
A poem about.
Yeah, yeah, it's the artist's creativity, instead of telling them, we tell them some of these little variables that we'd like to see, oh, how do you have to show Duncanville, et cetera, et cetera. And then our, maybe even have a, a contest where, um, we post all the different. Designs that people have, and let, let the public come and vote on it, I mean, there are different ways you could do it.
Well, our plan is to get started with this as early as a couple of weeks. Not, not this, not this, like I said, I got nine signs.
Okay.
And they're, they're, it's dark, I mean, the signs are faded and, and we need to get this done, uh, this being the larger of the nine. But if you drive by the Field House when you leave here tonight, just look at the Field House logo on the building, the volleyball and the basketball has turned black. Because the vinyl in the Texas heat has melted against the, it doesn't do it on the word Field House, just on the vinyl basketball and volleyball. So every one of our signs have turned, and that was one of the things. Uh, the lights and the marquee out in front, all the paddles, all, everything needs to be replaced, it's just, I can't do it, this being one of them. And if everything goes right with our, all of our bids we're getting, we'll have all this put together, uh, in a couple of weeks, and would like to get started as soon as possible. I don't know how long the monies would be, maybe council knows, how long money, when you approve something, is it for a year, or how long does it last? I mean, how long do we have to spend this dollars?
Close question.
If, we're, been talking about this for some time, and now we've gotten to the point where monies have been allocated through the hot funds. And we're fixing floors, we're fixing carpet, we're fixing signs. Carpet is starting next week, gym floors, week after that, we're finishing this up. How long, so if we do have the signs between now and March, how long does the other monies last into the year? Does it fiscal year, it's over, and the hot funds have to be spent?
Fiscal year, but uh, there's only agreement that went along with the uh, authorization of the funds. So, probably wanna look to the agreement and see if there was a designated deadline, but if not, most likely it's the fiscal year.
Yeah, now I've been working with Jennifer, matter of fact, she wrote me the first email today to give me the scope of work and all the things I had to do to present for you guys, and I did that today. Then I found out I had to get every Duncanville flooring company, had to be notified. We got, we got one, but they, Elton said, hey, you gotta go find all of them, so I've been on the phone all day chasing carpet. But at any rate, I don't mean it's all in my business.
So, so, when you say fiscal year, that means they have until July, or?
The fiscal year and September thirty.
September, so they have until September, okay, we're booed them.
So we're gonna try to engage all of our projects, with this one being probably the bigger, most moving parts, and this being the biggest project out of all the things we're doing.
Would you like for he and I to kind of like, bring our heads together and try to figure out some kind of call for artists slash contest? That can run for a couple of months, that maybe we can create a poll, where the community gets to have a say in it, and then you select the three, and then. Then go to council, and then council selects the one?
That sounds great.
Sounds great to me.
Yeah, put the pressure on council.
We're back for us, I was the council to make that file. That's really all I was wanting to.
Is there anything similar nearby that's like that, that size, and I just don't know where it would even be?
Dee Bellman has stuff that's that size.
That big.
Oh yeah, Dee Bellman has something else.
Okay, well, they've got like, multi-story buildings, and it's usually painted on, right, but I mean, things that are on panels. Do they have those, I mean?
Um, I'm trying to think of a example, but I know I've seen them, but they're some from a mine.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen the paints, and what are, do you know dimensions you've got them by panel, but?
Just down there's twenty, it's a thousand square foot, uh, it's twenty-five high and forty long.
Twenty-five by forty, okay.
So there's, there's uh, twenty of these five by tens.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, four, five, forty. And that's written in your, in your.
Yeah, in our paper.
It's in the paper you gave.
Right, and we had it, we had it previously too, we had that information previously. So, am I hearing that you all want to move forward and. Get an artist's offer?
We had a couple of artists, and.
I think you're gonna call to.
Can I make a motion? I'd just like to make a motion that we uh, follow the recommendation, uh, that was presented, that we. Let the two gentlemen at the end of the table come together and put something for artist calls, and then we'll go from there. On this project.
I'll second. It's been moved by Linda Lydia, second by Mary Ann Taylor, that uh, Alex and Craig moved forward with a artist's, uh, exploring an artist's competition.
Okay, well, well, I'll put together something, bring it out to you on the fifteenth, as far as a, a, an idea, we'll pitch, I'll pitch you something. Have to work with him, and then you can decide what you like of it, what you don't like of it, what you want changed, and then we can figure out how to just get this, get this going.
Yes, okay. Any other, any unreadiness, any questions? Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose. As have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much. You wanna support the community and things going on, in what a better way than something like this to tie to a very positive, uh, good deal for all of them.
Thank you, thank you for thinking about it. So, moving on to, next one is Arts Grant Review Policy. Has anybody had a chance to go over the Arts Grant? Oh.
Um, I just wanna, I, so I put a, there's two, you have two versions of the policy sitting in front of you, and your agenda packet.
Yeah.
Is the currently adopted uh, policy with no changes. Uh, based on going back and reviewing conversations that were had in here, uh, things that were said during the city council meeting. I put in some items in red that may address some of the things that you were all discussing, since the previous policy was adopted and has gone live.
Okay.
So, for example, um, if you go to under eligibility and restrictions.
Yes.
So, a, a, a common theme is. What are the, what are the items that was brought up during city council meeting was when the date was, what dates were, of events were. So trying to have something that regarding a specific date for the event. Um, that, the, a regular conversation, almost in every single application review, has been budgets, whether a budget has been submitted or not. So, I put in the language, applications may be, applications submitted without a budget may be considered incomplete and ineligible for review, so something for you to consider. Um, and then another thing that came up when I was going back and reviewing the last application review, is that you had all discussed as a group, came up about. The art grant being, this art grant being the sole source, and it seemed like you wanted something that said, people should come to this with other sources that are funding it. Uh, people have applied for twenty thousand dollars for support of their event or their project, and it looked like that was everything that was gonna fund it. I also put in a thing about a restriction, applicants who have received a prior grant but not yet completed the funded project, or have failed to submit the required final report. Are ineligible for new funding until all obligations are fulfilled, that was something that you all had discussed during recent meetings. Uh, discussion, I don't know if I nailed the landing on this one, but best practices, I also included that, because there had been talk about. When people should be applying, so that their grant is given enough time to be considered and is appropriate for when they're holding their event. Under application procedures and grant process cycle, it's just another reference to applicants are strongly encouraged to pursue additional funding sources. This grant program is designed to supplement existing project funding, not to serve as the sole source of financial support. Uh, because of the fact that you have a lot of first-time applicants at this point, they're limited in the amount of money, so I think that there, there may be instances where people are going for the pie in the sky. I'm gonna go for that twenty thousand dollars, but I don't have a nonprofit, and that has caused a, a lot of conversations around that during the re-review process. Um, going forward, a couple uh, points, this was something that was not in the original policy, but an acceptance of award or declining an award. There was not an option for really doing that as far as in writing as part of the policy. So, decline in uh, acceptance by accepting a grant or the recipient agrees to comply fully with all terms, responsibilities and reporting requirements outlined in this policy. Acceptance constitutes a binding agreement to carry out the proposed project in accordance with the approved timeline, budget and scope. Uh, decline in an award, applicants may formally decline an award by notifying the Duncanville Arts Commission and writing within ten business days of receiving the award notice. Declined funds may be reallocated at the discretion of the commission and city council. Um, again, I haven't had the city attorney vet these yet, but these are just some ideas based on feedback that have come back. During the process of reviewing applications by both the commission and city council.
Any questions, Amy?
Can I circle back to that original question about, do we have to have the, I'm looking for it in here, will we have to have an in, informative, you know, the infomercial, whatever?
That would be on the matrix, on page, I guess, on page. Uh, under the application procedures and grant cycle schedule. See down, where it says quarterly schedule, um, like, it says marketing and info session.
Okay.
But maybe someplace we could put in here that the info session could be simply.
I feel firmly about that, because I also think, having, as someone who's applied for hot funds before with the theater many times. Sometimes it's easier to sit at home and watch that, that video and in your, you don't know what to ask, you don't know what you don't know. Um, and I feel like, having that ability to watch that, and watch it over again, and hit pause and go way back, let me look and see. I think, and that doesn't preclude anyone, anybody can come to this meeting and they can sign up and speak for two minutes, you know, um, and say things, but I, I think. That it would perhaps better serve applicants to have that, because also, every info session is gonna be a little bit different. You know, you're not gonna remember exactly what you said, or whatever, and I feel like, this is the one, this is the go-to, and then we can change it, but people who are applying, they all, they all hear the same things. And so I think for continuity, to me, that would be a really good way to handle that, so.
Depending on what we change, we might have to redo the video if it's changed what we would say in the information.
Right, and and I'm saying we can do that, I just feel like it'd be really cool to have the video.
And and we have some slides that uh, former Chair, Ms. Thompson, had, and had this, and we could easily change it, and any one of us could. Um, we can do an addendum to it. But the, the. Most of the things that he's, that Alex has added to it, um. Yeah, I think it's great, it's, it's things that we've all talked about when we've been doing those reviews.
So basically, what you wanna do is to add a virtual session?
I want an online instead of an in-person for session, you know, where it has that marketing and info session, I feel like that needs to be an online accessible click. You know, through the city or the Arts Commission's page, like, on the Arts Commission's page, have a click for your, and you know. Want to apply for a hot grant, click here for more information, and then it can give them that overview, that they can watch there, or that, or, you know, like, I look at the theater, I've got a board of directors. I could forward that, hey, each of you look at this when you have time, and let's get back and circle back around and talk, so that it's not just one person, and you know, you can't get everybody there at the meeting, and what are you doing? I just felt like that that might be, in today's world, I can tell you that every time I need to look for something, I'm looking, I go, is there a YouTube video? You know, is there something I wanna watch that'll help me know how to do that? And people are so busy that that might be a, a better way to even get more.
Get the information out there.
Get information out there and get more knowledgeable applicants, is what I was thinking.
That'd be a problem with having both, because there, some people really do prefer in-person if they have questions. And it's really hard to ask a question to an info commercial, or a YouTube video. And if, these are all new people who've never applied for a grant before, they do have questions, I'm sure, but maybe.
But sometimes, sometimes for a, a question that we could always have at the end, if you have any questions or concerns, to reach out to the liaison.
I'm sure Alex would love that.
It already happens.
He does it now, he does it now.
It's in the policy.
Yeah, yeah, he does it now.
Can I, 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 I'm, I have a few remiss if I don't bring this one up. Uh, this was a conversation that came up quite a bit in the last application review, uh, it's under general eligibility. Uh, it's under general eligibility, general eligibility, under applicants must be eighteen plus. Applicants may reside outside Dunkinville, but their proposed event or project must take place within Dunkinville city limits. Or have a direct and demonstrable connection to the city, e.g. public art installation, community programming, venue partnership. Um, uh, uh, there, that, that way it gets you out of that. It creates the opportunity to be able to say, this person's in Dallas, this person's in Fort Worth, this person is in New York City. But they're doing this thing here in Dunkinville and making it a requirement that they have a business here or a residence here. Prevents that from coming here, so I put that in as, in response to those conversations you had.
But I don't understand the or, I don't, why do we have to go on with it? The take place within Dunkinville to me seems plenty, it's a good change. But the direct and demonstrable connection, I'm not sure why we have that. Look, they're all reading, I've got people to read.
That's unusual for me. I can see that if, if, and once again, you know, I don't know, I could see that if it were something at Thanksgiving Square or Dallas or someplace. And we were representing Dunkinville and we wanted to take that performance there to represent Dunkinville. That could be, um, have a demonstrable, a direct and demonstrable connection to the city, but not necessarily, necessarily be here. I mean, it would be something for us to consider, it doesn't mean we have to approve it, but I think that it, it gives applicants, you know, if.
Some flexibility.
Yeah, the flexibility of the theater, we're gonna go down and perform some cool thing that was on the history of Dunkinville. And show everybody in Dallas County how wonderful we were, we might want to apply for a hot funds grant in order to do that. But I'm, I'm just trying to think.
And, and the way I think, the way I think about it, Mary Ann has said, um, you know, we're right on the border of Dunkinville, Cedar Hill, DeSoto. We're right on that border and that, there might be, like, part of Camp Wisdom is Dallas and part of Camp Wisdom is Dunkinville. And maybe, um, an event might wanna take place, but it has a Dallas address, even though it's always maybe associated with Dunkinville.
Well, and we still get to pick, I guess.
Exactly.
It's like, it's not, so I.
And that's why I guess it's that, that okay.
Well, I also think our school district boundaries go into Dallas.
Yes.
So, we're doing something, even with one of the schools, that might have a Dallas address, but it's a Dunkinville ISD school.
Yes. With the school district.
I think that, you know, those are, so I, I like that wording, it just gives us flexibility. It doesn't, you know, demand anything, but it does give us flexibility to consider that, I think it's important.
I have another one too, if nobody else does. Sorry. Okay, so, it's a similar thing, you have here, multiple funding sources must be demonstrated.
No, don't, don't.
But, uh, on number seven, you have, uh, applicants are strongly encouraged to pursue. So it seems to me those should be in, in line with. Um, it either here needs to be an explanation of that or cut this back to, uh, should or something that's not so must.
Yeah, one is definitive and one is possible.
They down here. Does everybody see what she's talking about?
One is a must and one's a should. They both need to be either, both must or both shoulds.
Two pages over.
Kid catch. Those are normally how we can.
So that's something we haven't decided is if it's a must or a strong suggestion.
One of the things is like, yeah.
Alright.
It's a, some verb tense, I can't remember just what it is.
So.
There's a.
So is it a must or is it strongly suggested? What do you want?
I mean, that was, that's, this is yours, right? This is what you inserted.
No, this is some of the things he heard.
This, this is, so across, technically, these applications have been vetted three times.
This is all right, alright.
The first round by the arts commission at the time and then the city council. And then this, this third time with this second batch. So, and you guys are about to have one in January, believe me, you're gonna vet another batch. Um. So it's just basically the conversations that you have all had. This person is not eligible because they don't live in Dunkinville or, and then you, you, you wind up. You've had negotiations with yourself, because ultimately you're making recommendations to city council for them to ultimately make the final decision. But you were negotiating that with yourselves between the policy, um, hot funds, rules and all of this. And it's just kind of like taking those conversations and seeing how to incorporate them into the policy.
And this one.
I know we did, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, but just with this one though, it seems a little restrictive. Like if it's something that's going to go into a school, where would they get extra money? I, you know, a lot of them do charge a, a fee, that's what we've seen, I don't know what, maybe half the time, somebody's charging. Um, but sometimes I think that aligns hard.
Could we just put, could we just put multiple funding sources are strongly encouraged?
Does, does the city council have a preference on this, is this part of, wonder, you discussed? Cause I know you guys discussed this as well, so is this part of what you, you thought would be important to have it? Be part, you know, strongly diversified or, or, you know, is the must.
Funds sources must be demonstrated?
Yeah, what, did you guys think?
I would say my point, my point when we had the conversation is, um, I think multiple, multiple sources should be demonstrated. However, we defer to the city attorney, um, for his guidance on it. And, um. But I would say, what I was leaning towards was common practices amongst other funding sources. They all lean towards multiple funding sources, that this not be your sole income.
Well, I think we just changed the word must to should, that gives us lots of flexibility. Multiple funding sources should be demonstrated and then that aligns with the next page. And then that gives us, as Marion said, if it's a school and they don't have any other source or whatever, I mean, certainly as a, as a, as a commission, we have the opportunity to look at that.
It's a dissection.
And make, it, you know, good, good judgment, use, exercise good judgment on that, I think.
Just out of curiosity, what, what does that prevent if they don't have multiple?
If.
It's like a singular.
So when. When you don't have multiple funding sources, you're relying on the city to carry your vision forward. This is your vision, this is your project, so we should come alongside you with, because these are tax dollars. This is, um, money that is received from hotel occupancy tax.
Yeah.
And we have to be diversified and make sure we have enough to be able to spread out amongst the community and other applicants that may come in. So if, it just looks for a stronger application.
And it also shows, I think, I think it shows general interest in the project more than it's just a single one-off. This is something I want to do, you have, well, even if it's, even if it's, you have family members who pull it in, you know, pool of resources. But you show in your budget, income is from another source just in the act. It's not necessarily you have to have Bank of America or anybody else coming in, it just shows another funding source. Whether it's your personal funds or, um, a business, you know, State Farm Insurance is gonna underwrite part of this or whatever. Where you, so like, like, uh, Councilwoman Gooden said, it's not, it's not just that one thing.
Yeah, and ticket sales are legitimate.
Yeah, they, yeah, that's, I was thinking elimination, you know, but so that you're showing some other interest, yes.
So I guess like in terms of like specificity, could we just say like, provide at least two sources of income? Because of that could.
Too specific.
Too specific.
Too specific.
And, I think, I, I think that's too, I just wanna, I think, just change must to should and I think we're good, yes, Alex?
Yeah, we just want that.
I did miss one and it just came to my mind is, there were applications that said that they were going to have a location. If they got approved, they would find a location. I did not think of that when I was trying to remember going through everything. Uh, also, would you like something for that?
I would think.
I had submitted, like, um, a couple of months ago, just like, um, out of win, you know? Just to see, like, how the process would, would, uh, go about for a special comedy show here in Dunkinville. And that was just one of the questions that was like brought up to my attention. I think you messaged me, where, like, can you add the location, like, what location would be? Would be based on, you know, if the grant got approved and then I could actually, like, find or use that budget to find a location. Um, and then I kinda like, not that it scared me off, um, just, it, it deferred me from continuing.
I don't know if they should necessarily have a location at the time, because they have sixty or ninety days, they may have an idea of where they might want to do it. I don't know. It's up to the.
Because you have event date must be, please, you can check. Event date and location, but that's always applicable, sometimes that's not applicable, but. Just slide it in there maybe, what do you think?
I think my personal experience with hot funds is part of that is because, as Angela said, you know, we're using city money. It's, it's not our money, which, so if it were arts commission money and we have the ability to raise money separately. But the hot guidelines are so specific. And I think the city attorney and I, I think that's one of the reasons. So when it seems like we might be being a bit harsh or mean spirited, what we're trying to do is make sure that we comply with all of the statutes. And that basically, I, I mean, the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. Tells us a lot of what we can do and how it can be administered. So it's, it's a, I think when we get to our own money, at one, some point we'll have some money, um, that maybe we could make those rules a little bit more, um, less severe. But I think right now what we're trying to do is make sure we follow the law to the extent that we understand it. The city attorney, you weren't the beneficiary of that, but the city, the attorney came, um, when we first were assigned. Um, the use of these funds and went over a bunch of stuff about how we could do it and what we could do and how we had to follow the rules. So I think.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense now. Is that kinda like similar to what we just discussed about the must? Um, like at least suggest a couple dates and locations?
Cause they can always change their date.
Oh, okay.
I would think you could always change your date if something comes up, you might say, the place, the place you were thinking about doing locality, you would just let, they would just let Alex know.
Okay.
Cause by the time we get the information, or they start doing their advertisement and stuff, or then we know.
Yeah.
Yeah, then it's.
So at this point, I'm trying to create a workflow for behind the scenes for how this works. And I'm trying to create a spreadsheet, so if somebody says in their application, their event is going to be on this date. I put in, I plug in that into the spreadsheet and then I'm adding forty-five days to that so that I can see whether I've received a report. So for example, we have three, uh, the applications from the first round that have already gone through. Two of them have sent me a report, I have a date for the third, and that report was supposed to come in on October twenty-first. And she hasn't told me that it was gonna be on a different date. So at this point, she's ineligible to apply for another grant because she doesn't have per this, a report in. That, that, I think the thing that I'm trying to help with is making sure that you're not creating an opportunity for money to go one direction. You never see it again, and the city has never had the opportunity to have that. Um, any sort of way to track, was the money spent on it, was there a report? Did it help the city, all of those things? If somebody's just like, I've got a really great application, here, 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 it gets deposited and you never hear from the person again.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that, yeah, we should have, um, has a location, I think there should be something.
You have had discussions where people were saying, where people were, uh, I think it was a conversation that you had, you had brought up. Somebody had said that they were gonna be in the school, but they hadn't reserved the school yet. And I think you might be the center, know where you're getting.
Somebody said the theater.
Yeah, so you don't do that.
Yeah, and we were like, oh.
No. Not this one happening.
That's why.
Yeah.
So, we, we look at that as like honesty.
Yeah.
Integrity.
Yeah, um. Yeah, I, I guess that does make sense, that's kinda like what we were asking about, why you require multiple, it's like, because it creates a better plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We just don't want, we don't wanna be willy-nilly, just giving it out like I said and, and, and then we don't, and then they just.
Well, I think we should. Yeah. It's a more professional approach.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they haven't followed through like they should. So, I agree that we should have some verbiage in there about location.
Well, in, in the, in that sense, Alex, are, are you suggesting maybe also including, like, if there are any changes within the plan, I guess, email me?
Please notify the office.
Please notify me within X amount of days, otherwise it gets validated. And those funds are no longer given.
Right.
Are no to put.
Well, that, that, the challenge is, is that the, so, DCEDC, Dunkinville Community and Economic Development Corporation. When they do a grant, they do a reimbursement grant, the person has already spent the money. The arts commission was very specific, artists don't have those kinds of funds upfront, so they were asking for granting the money upfront. Pre-funding whatever the artist is going to do. The challenge is if you don't have the, you don't have the ability to pull the money back once it's gone. Once it's out the door, it's up to them to be responsible and make the commitment that they have done. And the only penalty that the city and the arts, the city has is that you didn't report, we don't know if you had the event. You applied again, you can't get funded until we get that report, we know that it happened. But if they don't report and they don't do the event, the money's gone. And there's not really a lot of recourse in, within the policy at this point. So that's why it's like attempting to give every possible measure at the front to be able to judge what the application is. If it's a valid application, if it's something that the person has a track record. Or they're saying that, there was a couple instances, one person said that they were going to be, have their event in the park. I was able to confirm that, another person said they were gonna have their event over at the senior center. I called, they didn't have a reservation. And I wound up having to kinda track it down to get that under them as a, this is actually going to happen. It's just measures for trying to ensure that the money's going towards something.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Okay, any other? I need a motion.
Do we need a motion or?
Yeah.
Um, I, if I could ask for this, if you maybe could all, I will send this draft to you. And you can all make some, uh, give me some feedback over the next couple of weeks. And I can bring you back another document that you could then review and adopt. And I will send it to you far enough in advance that you can sit with it, you can go through it line by line, you can punch holes through it. And then, uh, I can bring you back something that you can all look at and say, this is what we're gonna recommend the council to adopt.
So this is not for this funding section?
Uh, that, this, I, I, this is for, to, to have this discussion so I can keep, give you another copy that'll.
Right, but not for the people applying in December.
No, at this point, it's too late, we, I, the, the process for getting this adopted again is gonna take too long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the, would the copy, when, when would the city attorney be part of looking at that, after, before?
Um, ideally, it's going to be you all make a recommendation, I take it to the city attorney. And I take it to the city attorney before it goes to city council. If he sees something majorly wrong with it, that is such that it's not even anywhere in alignment with what you've recommended. I would have to bring it back to you just to be, just to be, be proper. But if it's like he'll do the minor tweaks and the things like that that tighten up what your intention is. And if I can do that with him, then it would go to council after it's gets funded by him.
So basically, once it gets to council, we will have to do gentle adjustments, it's ready for council. Correct, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes ma'am.
So I can send you the file, you can all give me your feedback, I can make adjustments. I will send you back all another draft copy, it will not be, you won't be making a motion by email. And then I will bring that back to the next meeting so that you can adopt it at that point if you'd like. Or you can recommend it to council and then it'll go through the next two steps.
Could you insert page numbers?
I will do page numbers, yes.
Thank you.
You have a comments with, uh, arts grant, can we move forward? Ella Fair.
Good grief, you heard us.
Ella Fair, um, Ella Fair for our new board members was a event that was put on by, um, some individuals, uh, city. Um some individuals, uh city, community, uh folks and. Our former board chair over at the senior center where they sort of had like a pop-up of arts. Different artists, um some visual art, um. Woodworking and different things like that and they had this function to raise money for the Arts Commission. Non-hot fund, so as you know, when it's non-hot fund, we had some extra money to do some things, so they did this um. Affair the first time last year and they raised, um I believe four hundred dollars for us. And it was scheduled to happen again this year, but we sort of. Didn't realize that the transitioning between the two boards. Uh was gonna happen, well, we knew it was gonna happen, but we didn't real, we just weren't thinking about. How it was gonna work and so it sort of just got put on the back burner or and and pushed pushed away aside, so. Um it's on the agenda to see if this is something. That the um. Board wants to do again and uh which is Ella Fair.
How did they get the artists, were they, these were all women artists, you think?
No, there was some men, there was some men there, um it was.
There was some.
The person that really spearheaded was a young lady named Gail.
Slager.
Gail Slager.
Slager.
Okay.
And she was one that got the people and coordinated it and put it together and things like that. And then she was, um I guess she was giving it over to the Arts Commission, I'm I'm not really.
So how did we raise money, people buy the artwork?
People bought the art and and they that they were selling and then they donated the proceeds to the Arts Commission.
All the proceeds from.
No, no, not all.
They donated a percentage.
A percentage, okay.
Yes.
These were not, these were not cheap art.
No, they were not really.
No.
Oh, really?
So they they donated a a a percentage and I don't know, we could check with Gail to see what that was, you know, and see, I don't know. I mean, Gail spe- spearheaded it before and I don't know that we could. Do that without her, if she wanted to do it again, because it was really her.
It's her, it was her signature event.
Yeah, it was her signature event, you know, Ron, like you said, Ron, you know, the ch- former chair helped and so forth, but um.
It was mostly her, it was mostly her, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it, this, didn't they want money from us upfront this time to and to do it?
They did, we we.
And we didn't, I don't know.
We approved a grant, it was in the grant, cause I.
Yes, we did have a grant.
I. Yeah, cause I spoke about it at the city council meeting, for Ron had asked me.
Yes, they did, um.
So we got a, we appropriated three thousand, I think, Angela, is that right?
Probably three thousand. Yeah. That's right, we did, if you look in your um. I don't see it in here, but. Yeah. I do remember, did we, I I do remember us, but it.
We talked about that.
Talked about it, but but it's not, it's not when the grant was.
But.
Did we?
Yeah, yeah, do you remember? Maybe he's gonna do, he's gonna send up somewhere.
Was it?
Uh it is the twenty twenty-five minutes Ella Fair, he he originally requested four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars on the application. But uh the the requested amount was amended during the meeting while you all were talking. And you all unanimously approved to fund it for three thousand dollars.
So did the grant application indicate it was a fundraiser again for the commission?
It was described as a two-day community art event launched in twenty twenty-four by Dunkville residents, Gail Slager and Sue Clark. Support the newly formed Dunkville Arts Commission through public awareness and grassroots fundraising.
So some of the funding that you received came from donations that were made as the uh people who entered in. They made donations.
They're not just purchased.
No, not just purchased, and they had jewelry as well.
Right, they're jewelry, a different thing, but like I said, they did it, they raised five hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred dollars. But um but we haven't, nothing has been dispersed to, you know, cause this was us, right?
He he told me that it wasn't gonna proceed.
It wasn't gonna proceed?
Yeah, he had told her that it wasn't going to proceed, um.
So why is it on there, Jen?
You asked for it.
Did I? Okay.
A- actually, yeah, they these these four items.
Oh, okay, alright, well. Let's move on.
So we're not gonna do it?
No, we're not.
And they did not get the grant.
They did get it, but.
They did get the grant.
We, but they didn't get any money, cause we were going to do it. We, the Art Commission was going to take, was going to do it, but we're not moving forward with it.
Okay.
Okay, I mistakenly, whatever.
I'm just, I'm I'm not saying you're not, that that I, you don't wanna be taken out of context. He basically withdrew, he had reserved the space for it, he pulled it back because of the transition. If you choose, you can still, if that's what you wanna do, we can.
So he, Ron, that's who you.
Yes, yes, your former chair, yes.
Yes. Yes, I never heard it.
But I will, I will say something that has been negotiated over the past couple, not negotiated. Um Devin is going to start coming in as a co liaison. Not doing all the heavy lifting that I am, but solely for, or not solely, inspired by the fact of. Making sure that things like your events can continue to happen. By having a event planner work on the city side to help with that. So it doesn't particularly mean that this needs to stop now, you can do whatever you need to do or want to do. Um but also just to let you know, like we were gonna get that additional help with her.
Okay, so we can table that one and it can also be put back on um. Uh later, but if you go back to your minutes, you'll can see a little bit more about it. Okay, moving on, item number E, I'm gonna make this short and then uh we can discuss it uh a little bit more later. I had the pleasure of of being invited by Ron and Mr. Anderson. To Olden Year Museum, did you all know that there is a museum here in Duncanville? I did not, did you all know?
No music.
Yeah, music, I did not.
It's wonderful, I haven't heard.
Yeah, it is nice.
It is a beautiful museum on Duncanville Road. It is not open to the public right now, it was open up until COVID, did you, I mean, until COVID, did you know that the museum, Olden Museum? Okay, I did, anyways, for the last three years, some of us on the on this, on the art. Uh board have been always talking about, um Duncanville needs a. A landmark, something uh that brings tourism to this area, we've been always talking about. Trying to get a building, having a museum, art, whatever, whatever, and then I go on this tour. And I see this wonderful museum with all this wonderful stuff in it. And it's called the Olden Year Museum, the Ford family um has been doing this for a while. Uh had this museum, the grandfather started it, grandson has been trying to keep it going, but they have grown. Weary and. Did not feel that they had support uh from the city uh with this particular property. And so um they're looking to maybe, I don't know, get rid of it, whatever, they're looking at something. Um but anyways, they took us on a tour of it and the closest that you will ever get to seeing some of the stuff in that museum. Is in Germany, the next closest museum is in Germany. How can we have a museum right here in Duncanville? And we don't even take advantage of it, so the. What I just wanted to do is make you all aware, if you weren't aware, if we wanted to do a um a tour, um. Some ideas, maybe a business mixer there or something like that, but I mean, can you imagine how if if if. I mean, I I look at some of these other cities like Fredericksburg and Austin and Dallas and things like that, when they um. Advertise and talk about, you know, coming to visit. The Olden Museum is something that needs to be open and people need to be visiting, it would be an attraction, I think, to Duncanville, it's it's wonderful. I've never seen. Music on paper at place and and the, I didn't know albums were for steel. I'd never seen a steel album, uh and it it was just, it was amazing, it was both, it was engineering, technology. Um musical, all that, and it's just like a hidden gem right here, our former. Um commissioner, Ann Perry, have been trying to get us over there, we just, it it was not happening, um glad I had a chance to go. Um they wanna do something and maybe we can change their mind, I did forward you the information, we can reach out, but if that's something that you all. Wanna see it, if you haven't, you've all, you all have seen it, um but you all haven't, um. I just think that as Arts Commission, we might wanna take on the considering. Trying to keep the museum here and promoting it or something, I don't know, I mean, cause it's art, it is, it's it's amazing.
Where is it located?
Um Duncanville Road, do you know where the eighty-four lumber um company is?
Yes.
Ford lumber, it's right next to it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So have they given any idea how much money it would take to run, run it, I mean, it can't be cheap.
They've been running it out of their own, paying for it out of their own pockets for, since they've had the thing.
But they have very abbreviated open.
Well, that happened after COVID, but they were, that's because they were paying for everything out of their their pocket and paying for staff and keeping it. Um it takes a lot to to maintain those things that are in there and their antiques and. Um cause I was, you know, I shared with Councilman Goodman, I said, ooh, if they talked about moving or selling those pieces, I'd be horrified. At the cost it would take to move that, yeah, that's what I was saying, it's like, oh my gosh.
So are they a five oh one C three or?
They have a nonprofit.
Okay.
But the the. The art, everything that's in there, the museum artifacts, everything belongs, still is belongs to the family, but they do have a five oh one C three nonprofit status.
So do they have the board that they're supposed to have with that?
Girl, I don't know. I had to ask, wanted to ask.
Yeah, it's a really important thing.
Yeah, I could ask, I think they do, but um.
Probably everybody's family, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just, it's probably just family, yeah, I don't know, I just met them. Um I do not know them as well, you might.
I do, I taught uh Colin de Ford and know the de Ford family and and.
They've been here a long time.
And that was the grand, that was the grandfather and or the great uncle of my student or whatever and that was his passion and he collected all of that.
That was his passion.
All of those um items, the phonographs and the calliope's and the, I mean, it's just, it's it's an amazing museum, I can't even fathom. The amount of money that is invested in that, nor could I fathom what it would cost to maintain it and upkeep it, but it is a gem.
It is.
And it is, you know, it would be, it's one of those things that I would hate to see leave Duncanville. It's 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 really, really, unless you go see it, it's very difficult to explain or how you envision how wonderful it is. Um because I was kinda like, yeah, whatever, and and then we went to see it, um they had an open house when they very first opened.
When they first opened, that's what they told me.
And they had a chamber of commerce ribbon cutting and I was there, my picture's there at the front, we were all there. Um former Mayor Green was there, we had a lot, I mean, it was huge, there were a lot, a lot of people, we were all allowed to go through and they made everything work and they made everything play. And I think it's just been a struggle because it is expensive, um and they didn't have the hours and. I don't, part of it was they didn't really want it open to the world, it's kinda like the Smithsonian don't touch, you know? And so trying to have staff there to maintain it if you're gonna have an open museum, so it was kind of closed.
It was cost prohibitive and.
Yeah, so so I, but I I agree very much with our chair here that if there was any, even if it's an endorsement or if there's. Um you know, it might be a separate, I know there's historical hot funds that are separate from Arts Commission hot funds, there's a lot of things that are available out there. Um um I think another one percent, the same one percent that can go to the arts can go to historical. Museums and things like that within the city that's separate from the arts, but um I've, anything that Arts Commission could do, whether it's just lending or moral support or. I I appreciate you bringing it.
It it it's, it is wonderful.
And the school system needs to know and Village Tech, you know, those kids are amazing, they could do stuff for them for free to get.
Yes. Yes, yeah, saying all that stuff, and and it's not just music, it is the engineering that was done in the early years there, it is amazing.
Advertising and all that stuff. It's just a well-kept secret.
It is.
That's what I call them.
And it's enough.
It's not like they're trying to entice people in there.
No, they're, that's what I was saying, they're really not, they're they're almost like, we don't want you because you might touch it and it might break.
And that's why.
You know, but but that goes to the fact that they don't have any, they don't have staff to help take care of things, so I understand that. Um but anything that I think.
That we can do to help if possible, you know, to keep it here.
Yeah.
Let's talk to their board, see what they say.
Is there any way we can also get, was that in the previous um tour?
No, that was, no, that was not the previous tour, yeah, just got.
Is there any way we can get a tour?
I can ask her, because we're trying to set something up, so uh we'll set something up and if we can, let.
Not not only us, I mean, but like any other commission that would be interested in doing that.
Or city council, but I reached out, I mean, I came back and got on the phone and called our liaison and I was like. I can't believe we have a museum, a great museum here and we don't even know about it.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's awesome, it really is, it would attract a lot of tourism. And utilizing hot funds, I mean, anybody, if they stayed at a hotel, the first thing I would tell them is, oh, if that museum was open, be sure to visit the.
The hotels need to know about it too, they need to have some.
As after flyers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it first opened in twenty eighteen?
No, it was long before then.
May, no, it may have been something like that, it's not been that long.
Oh, really, okay.
I found a thing.
Cause he said that um that it was when COVID happened, that they, things changed a lot.
But that was twenty twenty.
Yeah, cause they did, they had the light crushed double, it's for their grand opening, so that was it, yeah, yeah, that was it.
But it's a wonderful.
Yeah, it's 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 cool, it's it, I agree with you.
So it's something I just wanna put on, um it was on my heart and I just want to share it with you all and we'll see if we can get some, uh like get another tour or something and. Look at ways.
Talking about a very enthusiastic thing, we're like, we'll pay you and then you're like, oh, but it's closed.
Yeah.
It's closed most of the time.
It's closed most of the time, they're they're not open right now, you have to call and and make arrangements, so, but they they were very receptive. They did the tour and they were very receptive on some ideas. Um with maybe them not having to sell, maybe they'll be on loan or something like that or. Maybe the city can lease the property and keep it going or something, I don't know, it's just look at, but it's it's a, it's a gold mine. Okay, so moving on, um and if you, as if you research and you come up with, um cause I'm gonna look up this historical arts fund thing, okay.
One percent, I probably have.
Information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lots of hot fun stuff.
Okay. Um okay, we have item number six, non-action items, uh Alex, Midnight Murals.
Uh Midnight Murals was something that uh that the conversation started about this, I guess about two months ago. With uh your former chair and the.
Teacher.
Community, the Public Relations Officer, her, P D, um and the idea was born from Curtis Ferguson. And a project about taking possibly at-risk youth and doing murals after dark. Um. May have started that at the wrong end, so what I would like to do is I'm have a meeting with Chief Stockner on Wednesday. I would like to take this to him, the basic concept of it, get his input first, start packaging it up to bring back. From the city perspective as far as code, as far as police, because police would have to be involved in it, there are some code uh issues. Not issues, there are some code items involved in this and I would like to try to address all of that. So for example, street closures and permits are a part of this, which is section seventeen, then through six, seventeen sixty-six. So for example, street closures and permits are a part of this, which is section seventeen, then through six, seventeen sixty-six, which requires approval through public works, uh, permitted hours for construction, so a mural would be considered construction and permitted hours are seven AM to seven PM, and right off the bat, the name doesn't really work with that. And then, uh, the murals and signage, which we've done some, you have all done some work with that part of the ordinance. But what I'd like to do is because this is tied to a youth program, at-risk youth, doing all of that, I understand that there are some buildings that have already said that they would raise and be a part of this, but it's that after dark thing, it's that construction, it's possibly the involvement of the police department. I would like to start with the top of the police department and then work through some things, bring you back everything that I learned so that you can figure out how you would like to progress, proceed from that.
Any questions?
Okay.
And is Caitlin's mural still ongoing to?
Is this going before council tomorrow?
Okay, okay, I'll be at the council meeting, okay. Alright, and last is arts and business mixer. Um, we know that the economic development wanted to take up the business mixers that we've been doing in the past and they wanted to, and they funded it in the beginning and then later on, we, city council gave us money to do it and it's been going well and now economic development would like to, um, take the lead on on the business mixers and some of the business things, of course, we could make a recommendation, but however, they wanna still partnership with us and, uh, want us to, um, do the arts components to whether it's, uh, comedians, which we've had before, musicians, um, artists or anything like that, that whatever they have at their business mixers, like what we did, we would do the the artist part, aspect of it, but that also will mean that we probably need to put in a grant request so that when it happens, um, we have some money set aside to, um, to get an artist to come in and do whatever it is they want, so we'll need to do that, so that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Do they have dates, do they know when they're done?
Not yet, um.
Uh, well, Devin, we'll have Devin for that and there was, I had a passing conversation as things happen. Uh, this, today was, uh, Marlon with Economic Development was walking this way and I was walking that way and he said, maybe we should start with a joint meeting between the two boards, between the Arts Commission and D C E D C to talk about the arts business mixers and taking that forward, so it's not so much them taking the lead, but it is a true partnership between the two boards.
Cause the only person that I've really talked to right now, and I haven't been to any of the meetings, I was going to go to one of their meetings, but, um, Patrick Harvey was chair.
Sure.
Yeah, he had, he had approached me about some of that, so, um, not really sure what they're doing just yet, but I know that they still want that, the arts aspect of it.
Would you all be open to a joint meeting if that could be arranged?
Yes, yes.
Uh, do you have a preference of like, I might not wanna do it in November, December, or maybe you do, I don't, okay, those. So what I can try to do is I can, I can work with them and see if we can find some dates, maybe in January, so that doesn't, there's not too much lost time.
Okay. And, um, and then if you all have any suggestions or recommendations for, uh, grant requests, you know, you can add there so that we, it can get on the, um, schedule. Anything else, any other unfinished business, hearing a line? All minds clear? Meeting adjourned to eight twenty-three? Oh. Thank you, I used to be chair of another organization.